Darius?
No.
Okay, everybody's been on this end. If so, Ed, please project.
Okay, thank you. And again, I welcome questions. We do have a segment at the end of the presentation for questions and answers. We've calculated and we guarantee nearly $27 million in net savings. With positive cash flow. Net savings of 3.8. I'll invite Tyler.
Tyler, you're gonna have to project a lot.
Yes, sir. Alrighty. Again, thank you, Ed. We wanted to basically break down building by building what you're getting, costs, savings-wise, energy conservation measures that are going into each one of those buildings. So I just use the arrows. Okay, so kicking it off, the building we're standing in, the tower building, the improvements here, we're looking at a cost of 2.9 million and a between the federal funding and 20-year savings, 3.3 million dollars worth of that. The scope will entail an LED lighting upgrade, master planning, so associated with that is building controls and automation, HVAC replacements, a new boiler plant, a new chiller plant, and then full new ventilation, which includes your heating and cooling on floors nine and 14. The illustration there shows those red and blue pipes will be heating hot water and condenser water risers that will be running actually right behind that exit sign right there. There's a closet vertically all the way up to the top of the building where they can be tied at that backbone infrastructure is going to be installed, so they can be just tied into using air handlers and VAV boxes, kind of like you can see in the bottom left-hand corner is what a typical floor would look like. So everything will be there. We're going to develop floors nine and 14 exactly that way. And then as the systems on the other floors become of age, begin to fail, it's all set up right there where you just tie in exactly what we're doing on floors nine and 14.
Tyler.
Yes, sir.
Before I just like, I'm gonna chime in, emphasize a little bit here. For the board, the tower building here forever, we have been basically patchwork, Band-Aid. Every time a floor needed an air conditioning, we would go ahead and put air conditioning on the floor. That's why you only see those two floors. Those other floors, we have installed air conditioning standalone units in there, so that's why you only see the two. When those fail, they will be added to the backbone of the overall structure there.
So, if I may, but when Honeywell was here on their previous visit and did all of this, you're saying that we did not update the air conditioner or chiller units?
No, the money wasn't.
On, on the roof of five, right out here?
The money wasn't there for that. That was, that last project was more of a lighting issue. We did lighting and reduced the cost of our lighting that paid for that project. It wasn't the heating, cooling, all that stuff. This here will solve the problem going forward. And frankly, without all the changes and the ARPA funding and the rebate money and all that stuff, even this project would be suspect for that, you know, it'd be much more difficult to lift, if you will. So, yes, sir.
Do we have a life expectancy in the remaining cooling?
Uh, I was gonna say I don't have, but the engineer does.
Yes, I put together a comprehensive sheet of every air conditioning, heating, ventilation system throughout all the buildings we looked at. And it, yes, it shows the expected life expectancy, the remaining years. And that is part of the reason why we're doing this master plan as opposed to just going ahead and redoing every floor is because not all of the units have reached their useful age and are still in good operating condition. They aren't causing you high maintenance costs. So, any...
Yeah, so we can share that information with you as well. They'll have a complete summary of all the equipment across the entire county that we've established.
Oh, that'd be great.
The bottom line is, we didn't want to throw out perfectly good equipment.
Exactly.
You know, and add to the cost necessarily needlessly. Eventually, but hey.
Yep, if I could add to that, Commissioner Williams, this project does represent specifically looking, looking and analyzing all your existing equipment and targeting most if not all the equipment that's at its, or it's beyond its useful life.
We have a lot of old equipment. I think it is probably appropriate to, at this time, talk about that difference. So there it is right there. There's 2.9 cost, 3.2 and savings over the 20 years. Tell us how you get that. That way we can cut to the chase on that for Commissioner Poleski.
Well, the cost itself, we developed the scope of work that you see before you. We developed the scope of work with, with a lot of research with this building, specifically understand, you know, what we have to do. Leave all the equipment that still has a lot of its useful life, develop the scope of work. We walk contractors through, get pricing on that. We were able to actually solidify the pricing really just as of, as of last month. That's how the cost was arrived there. National savings is comprised of federal funding, which we've identified through ARPA. And also, and I don't believe on this project, we actually have IRA contribution. We've identified specifically, once the scope of work has been identified, we actually can quantify the energy savings that's entailed in that scope of work. We calculated all that. We have identified operational savings, which a lot of older equipment requires local contractors to do maintenance, constant maintenance. And we work with Nikki, Nikki Drake to understand all those costs. We developed a model that shows that if we replace equipment, we're actually gonna do away with a lot of the maintenance. So there's some operational savings there. And then we've also identified cost avoidance with regards to equipment that's already been at its useful life. That's gonna be cost, that's gonna be come to reality when it fails. So we've identified those, those items also, but that's what comprises of the 3.3 million dollars.
And the energy savings?
Yeah, I spoke about the energy savings.
So there's a 20% guarantee that we're providing as well for a period of five years. So we're gonna help manage these systems and ensure that, you know, we are at a 20%. There's something I'll, I don't wanna steal my thunder, but I'll share with you a little later too, that I think will be an added benefit to the account as well.
So I would also add though, that I know that when they were calculating these things, these aren't private sky numbers. They took all of our utility bills, all of our receipts, all of our, so they have all our numbers of what we're spending or have been spending on for this equipment and everything. So it wasn't, well, I think we're gonna defer this much cost. The actual have the numbers approved.
That's, that's accurate. That's how we establish the baseline usage.
But remember, Verage is providing a guarantee on this. So they, it's in their vested interest as well to make sure their numbers are accurate and truthful, because if they don't reflect that, it's gonna cost them.
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct.
Everybody?
I haven't heard an answer to my question yet, Mike, but I'll keep going.
Oh, oh, then maybe I don't understand the question.
Okay, here's the question. We're about to partner with Verage to help ourselves to the federal FISC.
Yes.
It seems to me that the savings from spending public money, you know, regardless of where it came from, should exceed the cost of the project. The savings should exceed the cost of the project. Cost of the project 28 million. The savings are 27 million. Now, between Verage and us, we're helping ourselves to a share of the federal FISC that they're looking to throw out of Washington, and I understand that. But if somebody ever asks me, why did you approve this project? That had $27 million worth of savings that cost 28 million of federal and, and our money. Why did you vote for that? That's the answer.
Oh, the total, total. You know, I would add a couple of things that you guys can chime in after, but first I would say that much of us, many of these things are gonna last beyond 20 years, once they're paid for. We have some things that are gonna go for 30 years, I think.
Even 70 years.
70 years. I mean, seriously, the geofield, I think is a long, long time, 50-plus year thing.
Yes.
The, the waste water treatment plant and all that stuff out there is gonna go for, I don't know how many years. But the bottom line is, we only counted the first 20 years of savings. We didn't include any of the years after 20 years. We're like, okay, that's a little far out to be predicting this and that. But at the same time, we, these guys, they know what the life expectancy is of certain models and equipment that we buy. And then I would tell you the other side of that equation, and it's not the hard number side, Earl, because the hard number size, when you go beyond 20 years, clearly saves a bunch of money.
Well, with discounting though, what's the, what's the?
Agree, right, okay. Yeah, there's time value money calculations. That's, you're getting the, but the other side of it is the intangible stuff. By doing the work we're gonna change, we change the life of our employees and our, our, our customers, frankly, and are using our facilities to, and are much improved in that perspective. We can address that more as we go too. So there is that intangible side of it, but frankly, I'm very comfortable. Financially, the project, the money, it's there, so.
Yeah, I understand your question because you see an energy savings, it's less than the expense, but we're showing a cash positive of $3.8 million at the end. How is that? And I think what we need to do is, we've got a complete log of how we're calculating those savings across each category, and then also information from Bank of America regarding how the project is being funded. And we'll simply turn that over to you supplemental information, so that you have that and you could share with your constituents that, hey, this is actually calculated at $3.8 million cash positive, never negative any year. And, you know, you'll have that back in support.
We also can show that number, so that number's not entirely representative. It does not include any federal funding, anything like that. So if you really took into account what you're injecting into the project as well as the savings, it's actually at $40 million as opposed to 26. The 26 is purely energy and operational.
Okay, so now I think we're, we're starting to talk about mixing kind of apples and oranges in the calculation. So I'm, I'm still waiting to listen, Mike.
Yeah, no, no problem. And the, and the other thing I would add is if we don't spend the ARPA money, it will go back to the federal government. And while that's not a problem for some, it will go, you know what I mean? It's a problem for others.
Yeah, yes, Commissioner Poleski, once we share the information to you and actually demonstrate, there is life beyond the 20 years. This represents 20 years. We were trying to encapsulate with regards to, you know, parallel with the actual funding through, or actually a financing through Bank of America. You know, once we, we get outside of that, you know, it's, it's more apples and oranges. But you will see that after 20 years, there's a tremendous amount of cash flow, especially the debts aren't even paid for.
Or even, Tony.
Hello, gentlemen. With respect to this particular building, if I'm reading this right, I just wanna make sure I have a proper understanding. The savings on this particular building is going to be with energy efficient equipment, not alternative energy. Is that correct? And we see some of these, I see solar panels. There's no alternative energy source going on this?
Yes, that's accurate. We consider solar panels here, but there's, there's frankly no space for it.
Okay. And that leads me to the next question, since we're gonna be deriving most savings from more efficient equipment, correct?
Sure.
Okay, so as we add these floors out through time, when the other ones fail, there'll be additional savings? Would that be an accurate statement?
Yes.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Thank you. Tony, please.
Following up on what Pusher Plus had asked, if the cost is 28 million, the total savings are 26,900,000, 27,000. We're paying 1 million over 20 years. It would be project costs and project savings. Savings are over 20 years, $1 million less than project cost. So we're gonna be paying an extra $50,000 a year for 20 years to...
We're waiting to hear what they had to say about it, Tony. I'm keeping my mind open on it.
If I could just elaborate on that?
Go ahead.
The actual financing is not 28 million. You're gonna buy it down with the ARPA money, which is, which is going to be just shy of $20 million. After year, year two, once the project has been fully installed and, and the switch is turned on with, with all the IRA candidate projects, like the solar and the geothermal project, within that second year, that other four and a half million that we've identified will come in. That's gonna additionally buy down the debt. But after year two, we've worked with Bank of America to actually reduce the debt after a year two, so you're not carrying that cost of financing for that for years. You know, two through 20. So to answer your question.
The total project cost is 20, project cost is 28 million. The net total project cost after we subtract out the ARPA IRA funding brings our actual cost down to 14.4. So we're comparing the 14.4 million expenditure and receiving a $27 million savings.
Yes.
And it's really gonna be more than that in the end.
Yes.
In the end, it'll be more than that. We just didn't wanna, we're, we're taking a very conservative approach to it, and we'll get more into that as we go, and hopefully everyone's question will be answered. I think Darius had a question before we go forward.
A real brief question. So with, with building projects and this general maintenance and things, they break through over a period of time. So I'm curious with a lot of the improvements that we're, that we're working on, as an example, with the AC. What's the warranty? Because I would hate for us to say that the warranty's three years and then, or whatever the time, if it doesn't exceed that 20-year gap, then we have to pay to replace it. So then the potential savings isn't as much as it was, or we anticipated to be. So I'm just curious about what the warranty allows these, right?
Yeah, so I mean, that's a good question. So we, our standard warranty is one year. Any manufacturer warranty, which a lot of the manufacturers, depending on the types of equipment, offer extended warranties, many of them 10 years. It's a prorated, you know, so it covers like failure of equipment, but not people who come out and fix it. The other important part of that though, is that we are replacing the controls for this new equipment. So we are going to be setting up controls that will operate the equipment efficiently, therefore increasing the amount of savings that's given to you, but also elongating the life. We are not going to just install this equipment and let it run full tilt, which does happen in a lot of buildings. We're gonna be operating it efficiently, elongating the life of the equipment. And that's, that's how we handle addressing warranty within some of that different project.
So with that being said,
Yes.
I actually said with my question, so this is, is this going to be a project of what the, the building is set as, just using the AC as the example, set at one temperature regardless of what the door time, that's just where it is?
No.
But sort of opposite, hey, we like to cool it, this office that's warmer. We still have that opportunities to do that, right?
Yes, that's correct. And actually, it's one of the things we pride ourselves on, Verage, because we have our own internal, what we refer to as digital services group. So this digital services group are engineers and software programmers. We understand that the HVAC system world is all going data-driven now. So every piece of equipment that we're installing will have a controller on it. It has a little mini PC. That's what that controller is. It's a, it's a small PC these days. And we can operate each individual piece of equipment, not only to maximize efficiency and also, I know I'm getting into the weeds here, but it is exciting because we write algorithms that can, can even say, okay, if you want to schedule a space, we can pre-cool that space based upon the number of occupants, and then turn, automatically turn that equipment back off after the scheduled event. We can do things that are way above and beyond what was able to be done in the past.
Let me, let me add to that, that currently we can't do that. Our, we have boilers in this building. The boilers turn on and the steam comes up the pipes. As if you, you have to, or to adjust it, you gotta go to each radiator and try to adjust it. So this is way beyond, that's why we're referring to some of the intangibles of comfort and so forth that goes with our employees than what we have to now. So.
Can I, can I, can I build on that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, fuck it. I know we got.
We gotta move.
You can see the VAV devices, you know, in each independent room. So those will have a T-Stack controller so that you can either adjust the temperature there, you can save for the main system. Really, I only want the occupants to be able to get plus or minus two degrees. You can let them put in whatever temperature they want. There's so much flexibility. And I just wanna share with you, like, we literally have customers where, you know, like the commissioners, if you come in, you want to be able to control that through yourself, though, we can do that. I mean, it's very simple. But again, we can put as much control on it or as little control on it as possible. That's where we'll partner together to establish, you know, how far do we wanna push these savings? Because the, what we've got calculated in there is really just the beginning. I believe there's lots.
It really is, and, and I don't want, we need to move forward, but I would tell you this. I know a lot of people in this building and other buildings that have their own little electric space heater under their desk. And you talk about inefficient, and that's not calculated in these numbers, stopping at some of that, or, so anyway, moving on.
Yes, if I could just fill in one last item in regards to this, is the backbone system we're putting in this building and really throughout the entire county is, is actually adding the ability to pinpoint making people comfortable. You know, you can see in this, you have, we have individual boxes for someone's office or bank of offices. They all have their own thermostat. The way it is now is, is, is when the heat comes up, they get heat. And if they get, they get too warm, you either open a window or...
Thank God they open. I open mine frequently.
But that's an opportunity to save energy.
Moving on. Come on, Tyler.
Moving to the youth center. Cost of 1.15 federal funding and 20-year savings of 2.8. What we look at is LED lighting conversion, the ground-mounted solar array. You can see kind of the overhead layout of where that would be, and then down in the bottom left is just what exactly that would look like on the ground. Again, building controls and automation tied into the HVAC replacement of six rooftop units, a mini split unit and a condensing unit with new coil into an air handler. And this is an illustration of what that looks like. So on the left are the before pictures of the current rooftop units there. They're past their useful life, they're failing, and they're inefficient. On the right is an example of the systems that we will be replacing them with.
I would just add that our equipment across all this project is gonna be consistent. So when something fails, it's not like it's a one-off, because right now we have a lot of one-offs. That'll make it a lot easier to maintain and operate and have spare parts for. Tyler.
Okay, human services building. Looking at a cost of just shy of 2.4 in the 20-year savings and federal funding of 3.3. Again, LED lighting upgrade here, we're actually going with a rooftop solar array. I'll direct your attention to the bottom left picture. That rooftop solar array just sits on top of the roof on rubber pads and is weighed down the blocks. There are no roof penetrations, will not cause roof leaks, things like that. It's a very slick and unique system and allows you flexibility to just pick them up and move them if you needed to for some reason on the roof. Doesn't, you know, again, have penetrations to cause leaks, anything like that. As well as building automation and controls tied in with the HVAC replacement of the four new heat recovery units, which supply all the fresh ventilation air to the building are currently experiencing issues.
But durability of those solar panels with ice storms, heavy winds, things of that nature, is there warranty on them?
There is. So the manufacturer warranty is 25 years to still be at 80, it's either 80 or 85% production.
Okay, thanks.
So one of our partners is actually Harvest Solar, so local Jackson-based here, so they'll take care of you.
Yep, moving on.
Okay, Department of Transportation. Looking at a cost of 2 million and the federal funding and 20-year savings, two and a half. Lighting upgrade there. Looking at another ground-mounted solar array. You can see the orange panels on the right-hand side as well as what that would look like again, the bottom left. Building controls and automation tied in with the HVAC replacement, which includes two condensing boilers, a new chiller and new air handling unit. The current system there, as you can see in the bottom left, those are the boiler on the left and an air handler on the right. They have a single boiler there, which means if it goes down during the winter right now, they have no way of providing heat to the building. What we are proposing is a dual condensing efficient hot water boiler setup, which will provide redundancy and be able to keep the building still up and at a safe temperature, provided one of them did fail, as well as with the air handling unit and chiller, just give you what that would look like. North Lawn. We're looking at a cost of 1.7 million there and a funding and 20-year savings of 3.6 million in lighting upgrade. Building controls and automation tied into the HVAC. We're looking at full AC and ventilation in that building, which entails four new packaged outdoor air conditioning units, 10 new indoor air handling units, 10 new condensing units and four mini splits. It's just kind of an illustration of what those would look like. Wesley Jail slash Officer the Sheriff, looking at a project cost of 1.8 million dollars and a funding and 20-year savings of 5.1 million. Trying and LED lighting upgrade, building controls and automation and HVAC replacement, which would be one new chiller, as you can see, the green in the bottom left, it is, it's failing on them currently. As well as four new large multi-zone air handling units. You can see one of them there in the, kind of the bottom center, as well as two just new indoor air handling units to provide all fresh ventilation air.
And I will chime in here. As you know, there, we're still looking, figuring out what to do with the old jail over there. We've been, we made it very clear that we do not want to do things to the jail that if we end up ultimately replacing that jail or for whatever reason, that we can't use. So this equipment is consistent again with our other equipment, and if, for some reason, or not for some reason, if, if we tear it down and build a new one, we can use the equipment either there or in one of our other buildings as, as need arises. It does not, it doesn't negatively impact the geothermal either way. That will be, that's just the icing on the cake over there. And, and the savings is considerable because the equipment there, as you all know, is horrendous. This resolves some of those more immediate problems with the jail. So, you know, the, it's important to do that. And again, I just emphasize again, all this ARPA money is money we were gonna spend already on HVAC in the county. It's not like suddenly we're taking money from some other project. We're not. We're getting more for our money by using this ARPA with a larger project where there's economy of scale. Tyler.
Yes, sir. Moving on to the airport in the terminal building. Looking at 1.5 million dollars, federal funding and savings of 2.6 lighting, LED lighting upgrade, covered solar carport parking. So again, diagram on the right where the orange panels are show roughly the approximate location of where that would be, and in the bottom left shows half of what that would be. There would be another panel extending the, the other way to the right of it to cover two full lanes of parking. As well as HVAC replacements there and we'll get to the conditions here in a minute, but so that includes two newer indoor air, new indoor air handling units, new chiller, new packaged air conditioning units as well as a mini split.
And this is the first one where we slide that shows that we're covering, covering parking with solar, which is a great twofer, if you will. We get solar, plus you get the protection of the car, you know, shielded for sun and snow and poison.
Walk under there to get to the restaurant and stuff.
People will like it, yeah.
Yeah, and it's very strategic at the airport. We have to really follow the guidelines of FAA.
Oh, yeah.
Reflection, glare, and so this is, this is like what you said, it's a twofer.
It's complicated. Move on.
Again, just some pictures of the current equipment there. On the left, it shows the aged air handling units as well as air conditioning units. We would be replacing all of that. The landfill.
The originator.
Yes, the originator. We are looking at a project cost of 2.4 million and a funding and savings of 4.2, 4.9 million over those 20 years. The scope entails a ground-mounted solar array, just to the left of that building there. Again, bottom left corner is what that array would look like. A refurbishment of that building. If you look at the picture of the garage on the building, you can see about half the roof is melting, is missing, the siding is missing. So there's some pretty extensive refurbishment that needs to take place in order for that building to be usable. And then in the upper left-hand corner, that photo is a picture of what one of the RO processing trains would look like. It's just got some collection tanks, filters, high-pressure pumps that serve as your de-watering filtering system. There would be two of those running adjacent beside each other, but not concurrently. It would just be for peak flows or if you have one go down or anything like that, you have redundancy.
And I would chime in again. On this one, we, this is not behind the sky. There is an existing or one or two. One, there's one other one already in the state operating.
Orchard Hill landfill.
Orchard Hill landfill, much the same principle, same process. We actually sent some employees over to go look at it so that we could have firsthand, on-the-ground eyes on it to see if it is gonna be what we think it is. And we believe this is a great project that's gonna save us on leachate and electricity too. It's, it's, it, does it? That's a?
The solar will offset roughly 70% of the electrical cost.
Thank you. Questions, sir?
What, I realize that the reverse osmosis, when you guys are done, are gonna be between 96 and 99% clean water. How much water, how much dirty leachate is produced by a hundred gallons of leachate, raw leachate that comes out of? The landfill.
So.
We talking about a gallon or we talking?
The system is sized uh for five gallons, we're anticipating just in case as a factor of safety, ten gallons, so ten percent. But it's a spec and designed to operate at five percent.
And then the idea is, is we take that dirty liquid to a processing center or we take that dirty liquid to a. A monofilth storage site.
Uh, you would, that dirty liquid would be collected and hollowed away just as it is now, just at a very less frequent rate. But the great benefit hits here is there's actually two technologies that are kind of. In test pilot phase for PFOS destruction, electro oxidation and vortex plasma destruction. Which would bolt on to the back of that plant and treat that five percent concentrate coming off of there. So your plant is already set up to accommodate that, it's just the technology hasn't been fully approved for, you know, full scale commercial use. So at that time, you could either, have you have two options, you could either then choose to continue hauling, you know, a few times a year, that five percent concentrate. That you still have leftover or install a uh, a destruction system as it becomes available.
Will we turn it into dry powder and inert?
Um, yes, it would be some kind of inert.
Sandy kind of materialized. And that's a math problem for the future.
Yes, but you are set up and equipped for it, it's not like, oh, this is obsolete as that technology becomes available, we've got the backbone infrastructure there again. Sticking with the master planning theme, um, it's future proof.
And ultimately. Mentally, you're reducing it to five percent, right?
And you're ultimately, you're, you're handling five to three percent.
Yeah.
As opposed to the, the, the bottom you're doing today.
And, and for those, maybe, you know, you, I know.
So I take my ninety-five gallons of treated water.
Yep.
And I'm going to, am I going to re-inject it into the water flow or do I send it to a mechanical treatment plant?
Nope, that is actually going to be clean, drinkable water, it comes out so pure that we actually have to re-mineralize it in order for it not to.
And you also need to, to naturalize it also.
Yep, and there's actually a stream in a pond there called Curse Pond, is the plan is to discharge it right into that, right from the plant.
And how often will we have to test that pond to prove it's clean?
Likely for your NPDS firm, it would be once a month is my guess, but we will have a um, basically um. Or a resistive tester in there that monitors the TDS, so if there were any failing filters or anything that's getting through that it's not supposed to be. It would automatically strip an alarm, shut the plant down and you could address it right there, but you would likely, um, the operator would go to the outfall and collect a bottle sample. Send in likely once a month.
Yeah, I was reading where in Oregon, what they're doing is they're treating this water, because it's too clean, they're running it through. Burlap bags of oak leaves.
Okay.
Um, so that way you can condition the water, because I know that you produce clean water like this, you end up with a sterile spot. That's just beyond your effluent site. So what occurs is that they end up having to figure out a way to get the biomass back up in the water, so that way fish will swim in it, bugs will swim in it. Everything like that to actually make it function versus having seven hundred and fifty feet of sterile water until it can natural. Do we, do we have something, are we worried about that, um, in Michigan or are we not worried about that?
We have a remil- re-mineralization built into that where it will flow through essentially limestone to pull those. Trace elements, calcium, things like that, back out of the rock and into the water to then make it safe and inhabitable for fish. So no, we have no. Um, predictions of it causing any ecological issue when it's discharged into the.
Will that be a warm water discharge or a cool water discharge that coming out of there?
So it would, there are laws or, or regulations that you have to stay, I believe it's below ninety degrees. So it would be warm water coming out of there, but it's going to be actually, we'd like it piply, pipe it down under through the ground over to there, so that would help in the. Cooling process, we're talking about pretty slow after it discharged.
Sure, and, and much of our, much of that specific um, solution is really paralleling what's already been set precedent with the ocean landfill in. Waterville, Michigan, um, that's been approved by Eagle, it's continually being permitted and approved. And we don't, we don't see any, any uh different uh approach that we're going to take. Uh, we know that's, that's working, it's been permitted, it's been approved and, and uh, our thought in our, our. Plumber design engineering is parallel of that.
Hey, the only last thing, two things on that I would say, one is uh, like literally when it's raining like this, we will have to have a truck with ten thousand gallons go over there. Capacity, suck up all the water today, and I mean, that's how this works, when it's raining here right now, current ground conditions. Every other day, we're taking water out of there and have to ship it off to a special land or what treatment plant to treat, we won't have to do that anymore. And except for maybe a few times a year, we'll see. Uh, and the other thing is, uh, it sounds like it's not going to harm the fish, so.
Our solution will address ninety-five percent of that, so.
Yeah.
My concern is not the fish, it's the transportation, because as we witnessed in the United States recently. Transporting toxic chemicals can ruin all communities.
Oh, yeah.
Whether it's actual or social.
Yep, and that's, that's why we've designed it to be able to tie right on to those PFOS destruction systems, it's just, they aren't commercially. Available and licensed yet, we're still in pilot phase, so three to five years likely, yes, that will be a viable option where you won't have any transport whatsoever. And you can mitigate that risk.
Cause it ain't the fish I worry about, it's ocean.
Um, moving on to the event center, project cost of seven hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. Funding and twenty year savings of just shy of nine hundred thousand dollars and that would be a roof mounted solar array there again. Non-penetrating, just uh sits on rubber pads and blocks weighed down on the roof there, so completely un- unobtrusive, sorry.
Uh, question, Tony?
When you put new solar arrays on existing roofs, I'm always concerned about the. Roofing material manufacturers, will they, would you be able to maintain that warranty? After putting all these initial penetrations through it, you know, must have gone through this other projects.
So, yep, we actually, it should actually expand on the life, so. Improve the expected life expectancy of that roof because we are not penetrating, it's just sitting flush on the roof, so. Put down a rubber pad and then think of a, you know, a urethane bracket that that panel sits on and then a block just weighs that down. There are zero penetrations going through the roof. So it does not affect the manufacturer warranty at all, and in fact, it protects the roof from the sun's rays.
Okay, so you don't have mechanical fasteners preventing these solar panels from blowing away?
No, it's pure gravity in those blocks.
We've got weights on the roof.
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, presume before you do this, you will. Get some structural drawings of that roof that you know that the structural system.
Yes, yes, sir, and this system typically only comes in around four to six pounds per square foot, so there shouldn't be any issues, but we will have structural engineer sign off on it, yes. Okay, um, this just sums up the Chantilly, all the parks and garages we looked at, it's going to be LED lighting specifically only. Um, cost of five hundred thousand dollars and the total funding and twenty year savings of one point one. And just taking all your T eight LED light or T eight fluorescent lights and converting them over to efficient ten and a half watt LED lamps. Uh, the final building would be the courthouse, this is a projected cost of. Ten, just shy of ten point eight million and uh, federal funding and twenty year savings of ten, just shy of ten and a half. That scope includes the LED lighting, a covered carport, solar parking, EV charging tied in with that, so there's a point of use EV chargers. A geothermal well field underneath the parking lot there, which would then have the covered solar parking structure on top of it. The HVAC replacement uh throughout the building, switching over to water source heat pumps and designated outdoor air system units. As well as controls and automation. This is an example of what that geothermal well field looks like, it's just an illustration of a building on the left and on the right, it may be faint and hard to see. But those little green circles are where the wells, the proposed location for the um, vertical wells that go down to the ground.
Ray had a question.
Is it going to be, uh, I see it's a vertical system, is it going to be open or closed?
Closed loop.
Okay.
Um, so actually, just like what that picture shows, it's going to be, uh, I believe it's inch and a quarter, essentially, you think of it as hex pipe almost. So it's fully uh welded, there's no seams, no joints, anything like that, that just loops down and loops right back up. There's no interaction between the groundwater and the, just the water we're pumping through the system. This is an idea of what that's covered solar parking structure and EV charging would look like, the EV chargers is the point of use chargers underneath the solar system on the left. Uh, the general layout there in the center that is laid over what the current parking lot looks like. And then the image on the bottom and on the right are what we can expect the covered parking structure to look like.
Those EV charging uh systems can be set up for payment? Yes, okay.
Yep, and you'll have full control over that, whether you want for employees, they can have a code that they enter in that, for it's a county vehicle, there's no charge or it goes to a certain account. Or you can set it up the way somebody can swipe a credit card.
Yeah, the, the system is fully networked, so you'll have software to do what you, what you pay.
And this is their current system there is steam boilers as well as a decentralized cooling system composed of a bunch of rooftop units and. Condensing units hanging around the outside of the building, all various age. The goal here is to get converted over to a centralized plant, which would be your geothermal field that would provide your heating and cooling as opposed to the boilers and chillers. Um, associated with brown, with water source heat pumps throughout the building and uh fresh air ventilation units.
So those units that's hanging off the wall on that shelf doorway?
Yes.
Won't that, that'll be pleasant, you can see none of them, no two look the same either, I might add.
Yeah, there's a safety factor of servicing those or just.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a big improvement, um, moving on.
I am going to turn this over to Gary Montgomery, our vice president here, to talk about the economic benefits.
Sure, sure, I, I can speak about this, um. Um, part of when we, we got involvement with uh, with the local entities, um. Eighty-five percent of this project is, is injecting um, uh, the involvement of local contractors, uh, local. UA three thirty-three doing this work, uh, we've got local attritions, uh, uh. Local tradesmen, uh, to the value of eighty-five percent, we're, we're keeping the work within the county. It's, it's very important to us, it's very important to the administration and it's very important to the county itself. We calculated uh roughly, um, you know, two hundred and fourteen jobs created locally here in Michigan. And Michigan, in, in Jackson County, uh, and more specifically in Michigan. Uh, I, I didn't, I didn't mention uh, the, the geothermal contractors is, is a premier contractor located in Grand Rapids. Uh, they, they've done work with us, uh, we did a previous project at Calvin County and very successful there. Um, IRA specifically uh looks at and targets that, um, targets low income communities, which. Jackson County is uh, is part of that community, so there's, there's uh IRA dollars specifically targeted for these uh. These low income communities.
Mr. Barrett.
The uh, question on that, the. Inflation Reduction Act funding provides stimulus to local low income communities. How does the five or so million IRA fund go into this project? How does any of that get to local low income?
Well, there, there is a specific adder for IRA, uh, it identifies an additional ten percent. Um, with regards to the value of the project, that's um, that becomes fully available if they're deemed a low income community.
Who controls the additional percentage?
There, there's a website that you go to and it's part of all filling out for the application, so your baseline is thirty percent. And then you've got adders based upon the types of communities that you live in, but you simply type into their website. Um, fill out the information and it gives you whether or not, you know, you're, you fall within side of that parameter.
Okay, I'd like our administration to make sure we control that, that doesn't go to some nonprofit.
No, uh, we, 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 uh, we qualify and we do control it, in fact, the rebate would come to the county and we uh, hope to apply it to the debt service. And that's where it's in there, I think it's year two, uh, is where we're showing that and that five million dollars is, is. Will come straight to the county, the check will come to the county and we would pay off some debt with it. It doesn't go anywhere else, it's not like it's going to, you know, some other organization in the county at all.
Yeah, all, all the projects that we're doing, um, for this county that are IRA candidates. Are in, are within the low income community.
Yeah. And as you can see up there, you know, it changes our carbon footprint, um, you know, to varying degrees. And I know that matters uh, some to some people and less to others, but that's fine. Uh, the bottom line is, uh, no, none of our board is in favor of, uh, you know, pollution for the sake of pollution, if we can save some uh, energy, some money. And pollute less, that's a good thing, and I think boards would agree with that, um, moving on, Ed.
And you, you just spoke about the carbon footprint.
Moving on, there we go, I'm just trying to move as long.
So, yeah, before you get there.
What's, what, what does one point three billion trees mean, is that like the equivalent of the savings or something like that? We're not going to plant a billion three trees.
Right, what it is, is the BTU saved for this project, it's, it's a simple conversion.
That's the equivalent of.
What they would.
Yes.
So you're, you're anti-tree, is that what I hear?
I'll just ask anybody, Mr. Chair. Moving on.
Yes, um, what, what I'd like to speak of now is, is our next steps. If, if we're successful today, we, we'd present to the uh, the general recovery committee coming up next week. Uh, and then thereafter, uh, we're hopeful that we'll get approval, uh, at your uh, full board uh committee, uh, the eighteenth. And then thereafter, uh, we do have, um, we've done a lot of homework with uh, Bank of America. Uh, with Cecilia and the administration to, to understand fully what we need to do to, to execute the financial agreement with uh, Bank of America. That's uh, that'll close, we're looking at the twenty-sixth. Um, that's a very important date because they uh, they've actually secured a, a locked in rate in through the end of April and um. And really, since we've locked that in, the, the interest rates already clicked four percent, three times already, so it's, it's um.
We have a good rate, it's locked until the end of the month.
Correct.
And the savings depend on that rate.
Absolutely.
That, that rate matters, yes.
Yes. We, uh, we anticipate, uh, once we get that uh, formality completed, uh, we will start construction. And, and I know, um, Commissioner Barrett specifically asked me, are we going to actually put shovels in the ground? Uh, no, that's when we actually have the go to, to uh, uh, look at some, start to order the equipment. Once we get the equipment in hand and, and do final engineering and mobilize, maybe shovel and ground will be in, in three or four months. But the act of construction involves, uh, you know, procurement, uh, shop drives, final engineering. Permits, things like that, we anticipate this project uh, to um, to go two years. Uh, completion in uh, May or, May or June of twenty twenty-five. The uh, financing will actually start to pay for the project at that point on and the guarantee will start.
And Ed, if you don't mind, just to kind of speed this up.
Go right ahead.
You can see the project benefits here, we don't need to read those to you and.
No, you don't need to read them.
We've been talking to you about this, the one thing that I want to share with you is that. From my perspective, uh, on the leadership side from Barrett, I just want to let you know that we're behind this project one hundred percent. And my goal is, right now you can see that, I mean, we've spent months setting this up so that we're trying to marry scope. With grant funding that's coming in and we hone this in to where it's basically a one to one, right? So every dollar you spend, we're securing a dollar in grant funding to support this project. But past that, my personal goal is, we have guaranteed a twenty percent energy savings here for the county. Typically, we are a hundred and forty-two percent on the average above, you know, so forty-two percent above. What we guarantee our customers, that's my personal goal here is to develop a relationship with your staff. And us push those savings to the highest it can be. I have customers, personal customers, that we've doubled the savings. If we simply take it from twenty to twenty-five percent, that's an additional one and a half million dollars in savings that comes to the county. Over that period of twenty years, so my goal here is, and my ask is, is for us to develop a close relationship. And really work together to push this level of savings, because I believe that we could easily make an additional five percent above the twenty percent. My goal would be, is that we're in the ten to twenty percent additional and I think that we can get there.
Thank you, any last minute questions, this will go to committee, Tony has a question.
There's ten different buildings where you gave us the figures for federal funding and twenty year savings. So when I've added up those ten different. So when I've added up those ten different dollar amounts, that comes to a total of forty million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. Like the courthouse, it's federal funding and twenty-year savings is ten million. So I took that, that figure that you provided for all ten projects, and I come up with forty point six million.
That's the grant funding plus all those other savings? Yes, sir. That's the grant funding plus all those other savings. What we'll do is, we'll provide you with just a simple diagram that simplifies this and shows you, here's what we assume for energy, here's what we assume for cost avoidance, here's what you are receiving grant funding-wise, so that you can see the full calculation. We want to simplify this for you so that you have no questions. So we'll provide that as a supplemental document. But you are correct, it's forty million total, including the grant, yeah, IRA, ARPA, plus the energy and operational savings.
Yeah, so if you take twenty-six point nine and add ARPA, which is roughly eight point one, and then IRA at roughly five point four, we'll get you forty.
Yep, I said the math doesn't work. We've looked at it.
Yeah, and we've got it completely spelled out and we can provide that as a supplemental.
That'd be great. Any other last minute questions, Tony?
Questions that maybe the administration can answer for me? The September sixth, twenty twenty-two, our first meeting, there were there were nine buildings that are going to get solar arrays. Out there, one less, currently the Cascading Falls is no longer in that list to get solar arrays. So I want to know if that was in the approved project scope September twenty twenty-two, why is it not in the project scope April fourth, twenty twenty-three? Also, the.
Well, let me take that first.
Okay.
Frankly, guys, when, when we first came and talked to you about this, we weren't, we weren't chiseling in stone any project scope. There was no real scope. What we were telling the board was, hey, we believe that with these buildings and this antiquated equipment, we can do a project that will save money. We're going to put pen to pencil so we can save some money. Where's the board on? Is the board agreeable? We're not agreeable. And you guys were agreeable and said, go ahead and pursue it. There was no, nothing was in stone on all that. So, and frankly, some projects stayed in, some went out. We probably changed it three or four times at least in that sense, that time, adding and subtracting based on what will work, what will not work. And that's really how that got down there. And ultimately, the project scope is not approved until the board approves the project, and then the scope is approved. What you approved only at this point was, hey, we think it's a good idea, go ahead and pursue it, see what you can come up with. And that's what we done.
Okay. Also, in the cover letter, the description, the facilities put together, memorandum of standing, memorandum of understanding of verity, signed in June of twenty twenty-one. I want to throw all of the meetings in June of twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. I could not find that memorandum of understanding anywhere. The board can copy what that was.
Yeah, we'll, we'll show you where, where it was because the board approved it. This is.
There's no documentation on it that I could find.
Well, I understand, but I'm sure it's there. The board approved it. You guys have proven it. We brought it, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you get the copy of that, I appreciate it. Also, in paragraph D, the letter of intent, September sixth, twenty twenty-two, I went to those meetings and I can't find any document that says letter of intent. So if you can get a copy of that before the, before the committee made it possible.
That was approved at the board level two, right, guys?
Yes.
Yes.
Some studies, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, I recommend verbal discussions, but I can find no written document that concludes it.
Yes, sir. There's no mics to speak of.
Yeah, yeah, okay. You know, I appreciate the, the administration and board being flexible in that. Because when we started this, we didn't know what we're doing. We didn't know the brackets. A letter of intent only set up, we get intent to do this. It's always flexible. So I think that we've bought it, or we've come to the point where we're ready to sign contracts and get this thing off of road and going. If there's other, other issues that we can address later, like the gas gauge, I'm happy to look at that. I think the scope of the project right now is pretty efficient.
It is. Got a lot of work to do. Okay. Wait a minute, Rodney raises finger. Question?
Yes. One of the things the upper money kind of did when it came in to play was air quality inside the buildings. Other than the equipment maybe being newer, and is there any different special air filtration systems that'll be implemented with this?
Yes, there'll be not only filtration, but also the amount of fresh air that you can bring in to the building. So that'll be up to current code, where you have outdoor units right now. Not only outdoor units, you have a wide mixture of units that are out there. You really can't control any of that effectively to inject fresh air into the building like you should today and have had to over the, you know, at least the past fifteen to twenty years. So absolutely, there will be many measures that increase indoor air quality.
CO2 monitoring?
Yes, there's going to be, there's going to be intelligent demand control ventilation. We're also addressing the, the filtration with MERV thirteen, which is, which is COVID, you know, preparatory regards to combating the spread. But you currently now are not using MERV thirteens.
The leachate coming out of the landfill is, you know, like if we're predicted to get the rain tomorrow, you're going to have to have holding to hold everything because I don't believe your practice plant is going to be able to drive that.
You, you have current holding tanks there now?
He can speak to those.
Yes, yes, you have, you have current holding tanks there now. They're, they're not going away. They're still going to, you know, they have enough volume to actually contain the water volume. It's been, it's been working for the last fifteen years. What will control is that volume coming into our plan.
Are you going to be using negative ion tanks?
Negative ion tanks for.
Reverse emulsives. What, what are you, what type water are you going for? Is the end result coming out of your machine?
It, it's going to be essentially pure drinking water.
Yeah, so he's asking about a specific system, RO system. I think the best thing to do is, we have a diagram in regard to what we're doing with all the water and how we're handling it.
I understand that.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that we could share that with you.
Yeah, Tony, excuse me, Rodney, it sounds like a one-on-one with the engineer would be helpful.
Okay.
I appreciate that. I believe we had a couple of questions on this way, Darius, then Ray, or no?
Yeah, it's more about the state than the less. I do have a couple of questions, but I'll wait for committee to address those. I will say that Commissioner Barrett's comment relates to Cascade with that being in my district. And if there, I guess if there's an opportunity for us to meet some things, take care of over there, I'd like to see that happen. But I'll save my questions for that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm afraid we're losing the forum here soon.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm getting you to move. Let's go.
All right.
I'm leaving right now.
Are you walking?
I, I've got another appointment.
I know, that's. Well, what, what I suggest, thank you, gentlemen. We'll see you next week. What I suggest is we postpone the next item. I'll bring it back to either next agenda or next month, one or the other. Sorry, guys. Appreciate your coming and hanging out with us. Unless the board of.
No, I'm going to public comment. Public comment guideline, each individual will state their name and have two minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity. It may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time.
Mayor Born with one forty-two West Pearl Street. I'll keep it short. I'm very impressed with the presentation. I'm impressed with the scope of the work. Like you said, it's very ambitious. And it looks to me like it's well thought out and well planned. I hope you can get with Commissioner Waltz and explain to him the process that you're going to be using on the leachate to answer his questions. I felt like that was left a little bit up in the air and I wasn't clear on that. Anyway, thank you for your time and your consideration of these ideas that help the county save money and improve our environment and improve our indoor working space for your employees. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, Commissioner comments? Any Commissioner comments? I want to thank everyone with their patience this morning. If you have questions, please put them in writing, share them with the administrative controllers so they can get to the verity and they can get us answers. So that way we can have them in a public forum at our next meetings or general government can be included in an updated packet, please, commissioners. Any other items? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
No.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Proposed, duly carried.